This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 10th, 2022 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:35. Before we get into the Board of Ed business, I'd like to introduce Bernie Pellegrino, the president of the North Haven Education Foundation, who is going to give the board and the public a little update about what the Education Foundation does and has done. And Bernie, since we have you here on behalf of all of us here, thank you, thank you, thank you to the Education Foundation for all you do for us. I don't think people realize how much gets done, extra things that you help us out with, so thank you.
Well, thanks very much. I'll bring that back to our board. It's great to be here, to see you all and members of the public. Just wanted to update you on what we're doing. We are about forty-five days shy of our eighteenth anniversary for the Ed Foundation, which is great. We've raised over eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which we've reinvested in the school system, and hopefully by our twentieth anniversary, we'll hit the million-dollar mark. So it's kind of a goal we're shooting for. It's, you know, it's been a strange two years for all of us, I know, and but we have been meeting throughout that two-year period, and we continue to raise money. And we're looking forward to being able to, you know, make some more grant requests and get that money back into the school system. So one thing that maybe I would ask, and we've been working with Patrick to try to get the word out to teachers and administrators, is we're open to new grant requests. We have money in the account to try to get back into those folks' hands so that can really help our kids. We did the great program in kind of the heat of the pandemic with the grammar school kids, the recess bags, which was a big hit and was well-supported by the community. And, you know, our fundraising continues to be successful, so we're looking forward to making more grant requests in the upcoming end of the school year and as we prepare, as you prepare, for next year. So we're here as a resource. If you are hearing things and programs that you think, you know, you may not be able to fund through your sources, we hope you'll look to us to help if we can.
Bernie, can you remind someone, because we have some newer board members. Can you talk a little bit about in the past few years, some of the grants that you have given to the district?
Yeah, they've been, you know, varied. We try to work with all the different departments and schools. Last couple of years has been big with some of our elementary schools. I already mentioned the recess bags. There have been these art paths.
Sensory paths.
Sensory paths. Thank you. And a couple of the schools, a lot with some special needs programs with seating, alternative seating, that we've helped provide some seed funding for, which have been, I think, also well-received. We're just doing a program with the art department at the high school. We continue to support FBS. We continue to support the music program, the play, et cetera. So those are the ones that come to mind. I know we also are trying to work with the alumni groups because we think that's a source where we can be helpful in bringing alumni back into the program, either as donors for our group or helping with programs that might be available, you know, within the system. So I know they're getting ready for a new, another all-class reunion, so we've been kind of working with them on that. Those are the ones that, I should have brought up lists, but those are kind of some that come to mind over the last year and a half or two. We do the senior, we've done the senior class gifts along with help from the other groups in town. So Russ recently asked us about that. I think we'll probably do that again. So, yeah, it's a variety of stuff and...
We appreciate it, Bernie. Does any board member have any questions?
I'll just touch briefly on the grant request program. It's online, so any teacher, administrator, or even outside third parties can make a request online outlining what the program is, how many students would be impacted positively, of course, by the program, budget, and a few other items that are in our request. And that comes to us. It's distributed to the whole board, and John Parisi heads that committee, and then we discuss it. Sometimes we have questions, a little back and forth with whomever has made the request, and, you know, we are pretty good.
Do you talk to the request with Patrick, with our superintendent?
We do. He's been great about attending our meetings. You know, we are careful not to, we don't want a fund request that maybe have opportunities
To come from our budget.
To come from your board. We want to make sure that we're working together on that. So that comes up, quite frankly, sometimes, or with part of the request, you know, maybe some of those supplies might come through the system and we buy the new piece of equipment. So, yes, we have been working with Patrick, and so it seems to have worked pretty well. The last plug I'll give is our next, really kind of first large fundraising event since the pandemic began will be on May thirteenth, Friday. It's kind of an adult fundraiser. We're going to do a trivia contest at the Hook and Ladder in Best Western and one of the conference spaces there. It'll be, I think, six-thirty kickoff, cocktails and buffet dinner, and then we'll get into the trivia event. We did a precursor at the middle school about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, which was well-received. And so we're doing this as kind of a spin-off of the spelling bee. And that's usually one of our largest fundraising events of the year, so you'll be hearing more about that in the next thirty days or so, and I think I see a great team right here.
That's what I was just gonna say. Yeah, we have to defend our title because, what was it, was it first place, I guess?
Yeah, Jay Ruez did.
Yeah, we came in first place. That's because we had Patrick's wife on our team.
And Don Ringer.
And Don Logan, yeah, because I knew nothing about current pop culture.
Well, it should be fun. We hope to see many people there, members of the public, you guys.
Great, thank you.
So we're working in earnest on that, getting ready for that event.
What is the website people would go to to apply for the grants?
I think it's northhaveneducationfoundation.org.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks again, Bernie.
Okay, great to see you all. Thank you.
It was nice to see Kathy today in the paper, the local paper.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, you know, certainly Patrick's at all our meetings. You can get a touchy. Very good to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is an action item. It's our consent agenda. The February tenth, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes, and the retirement of Mary Zambrella, a social studies teacher at North Haven Middle School, and Jill Brighting, a science teacher at North Haven Middle School. May have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the retirements of Mary Zambrella and Jill Brighting. So, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have. Are we okay? That's all right. Okay. On the minutes from the February meeting, it states that the board had a discussion around the mask mandates, vaccinations, and what the plan would be going forward. And Mr. Stirk stated that a communication will be going out to families tomorrow with more information. I agree with the second sentence of that. I don't actually think we had, we got to have a discussion, though. And I think that that should be reflected in the minutes, that the meeting was cut short because of...
We did not have a discussion. You're right. We intended to have a discussion, but we closed, stopped the meeting. We will amend those meeting notes.
Thank you.
So may have a motion to approve the agenda, including the retirements of Mary Zambrella and Jill Brighting, and amending our meeting notes to reflect that the board did not have a discussion on our February eighteenth regarding mask mandates and plans going forward. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We just have a big G up there for you, Goldie. We can't even see your face. It's a big G. Next, we have a big Board of Education Student Representative Report. Xena, would you like to go first? Xena Mohammed, in our student rep.
The North Haven High School Unified Sports Team was presented with a banner to honor the community work at both the Unified Sports Team and Best Buddies House.
It's kind of right there.
And on the same note, Best Buddies will be hosting their annual spring ball on March eleventh at North Haven High School.
What is that?
I think it's, it's like, kind of like a dance, I think, but...
For the residents of Best Buddies?
For anybody in high school, but they're not listed. Over the past two weeks, the National Honor Society has been hosting SAT tutoring sessions after school for juniors. Sessions will continue to take place over the course of next week in preparation for the upcoming March SAT. And congratulations in order to the cast crew musicians of the Malamia musical. The musical took place over the course of last weekend. It was a huge success gathering large crowds of students, staff, parents, and many other community members. All the casting crew did a fantastic job putting the show together, so congratulations to them on that huge success.
Thank you. Alex from Seattle?
So from a sports standpoint, the cheerleading team are in Class L, first runner-up at the Class L State Championship, and they're going to be progressing on to Boston, to New England. The North Haven Ice Hockey Team defeated Lyman Hall four-three, come back to win the SEC Championship for the second year in a row. They will be playing tomorrow in West Haven. And something more specific to the junior class, they're hosting a three-point contest to help raise funds to fund senior prom as well as like our other class needs. The winner will be given a gift card to a to be determined establishment.
Any questions? Thank you both. Next, I'd like to go to the Board of Education Parent Representative Reports. This is a position that the board has been wanting to have done prior to the pandemic, and through pandemic, we couldn't do it. But I'd like to welcome Kristin Cohen and Jen Goring as our parent representatives. They will be present at each month's regular meeting of the board, so I want to say thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to ask each of you to just, before you share your respective reports, if you would mind telling us a little bit about yourselves. Jen, do you want to start?
Sure. I've been a resident of North Haven for twenty years. My kids are in eighth and sixth grade, two boys. They're very involved in the soccer program and other athletics at the middle school. My husband's a business owner just over the border in Hamden, right on the state street, and so we've been pretty invested in the community. I can't remember what grade it was, but when Mr. Stirk first became principal at Ridge Road, I was then president of the PTA at Ridge Road, and then kind of asked my trusty friend here to join me. So I served four years as president at Ridge Road and then as council, which then I said, come join me again because we work so well together. So that's sort of my history there.
I'm Kristin Cohen. I also have two boys. I have a seventh grader at the middle school and a fifth grader at Ridge Road. They both also play soccer, so we spend a lot of time at sports events. My husband is a soccer coach at Southern, so we're, do a lot of soccer. I've also been in North Haven for twenty years, work in Hamden and the surrounding towns, so...
Do you want to start with your report?
Sure. So we had our PTA council meeting last week. So our four elementary schools and the middle school have been hosting fundraisers with great support from several local businesses. The elementary schools are in the process of renewing all of their yearbook contracts and picture day contracts, so they're actually considering doing some sort of collaboration to allow better pricing if possible. And then individual reports, Manoise is hosting their St. Baldur's event. They're doing the only one for the town this year on March twenty-eighth at 5:00 p.m. Blur Barber Shop is helping them with that. They also have a couple other fundraisers coming up, as well as their Scholastic Book Fair, and possibly working on some spirit wear. All the schools are doing some level of spirit wear. Green Acres, new playground is underway and should be done by the end of the month. They're setting up a gratuity wall and working on a toy drive, kind of focusing on being better together. Clintonville had the math and the language arts coordinators at their last PTA meeting. They're looking into adding an additional sensory pathway in their main hallway, and they have hosted a recent fundraiser with support from Carbone's Deli, Jay Ruez, and Grand Pizza. Ridge Road has their Spring Shred Day coming up on April sixteenth. That's usually a pretty big event around town. I haven't been president at Ridge Road for four years, and I still get emails asking when it is, so put that on the calendar.
Was that April sixteenth?
April sixteenth, yeah. They have a blood drive, March eleventh, tomorrow.
It's completely fall this year.
Yeah, so we got excellent response for that. They just did a great fundraiser, not really a fundraiser, they just did a great game drive where they put together an Amazon wishlist and any parents who wanted to contribute. They have stacks of Amazon boxes in their office just to set up for more. They realized that their stuff was pretty outdated in the classrooms for indoor recess and stuff like that, so they got lots of new games. Teachers could request kind of different games that they wanted, and I went on last night. I think there was maybe six things left, so that was pretty cool. They are restarting their after-school program. They have record sign-ups for that. I think everybody's ready to get back out and sign their kids up for stuff. And they are still running their before-care program, which is really going very well. North Haven High School is doing an Egg Your Yard fundraiser. They did that last year, and it was very popular, so they're going with that again. And we're also trying to work with the North Haven Conservation Commission to set up teams at the schools for Earth Day on April ninth. Turn it over to her.
Yep, just a few more things to touch on. All the elementary schools are working on fifth-grade recognition. I think they're just waiting for administration to okay their recognition dates. And also Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up, so I know everybody's working hard to appreciate all of our wonderful staff. The middle school, I'm the eighth-grade recognition chair, so I can tell you specifically what we're doing, but we have a Paradise Day set up. It's after-school hours. We didn't want to infringe on the during-school time, so that's for September, or June second. We also had an Infinite Nutrition fundraiser where we raised six-hundred dollars. We're going to use that towards t-shirts, which have already been ordered through, of course, Sports Plus. And the middle school also did a Valentine's Day flower sale where we sold three hundred carnations, which at the beginning, we're like, let's just order like a hundred or a hundred and twenty, and it just kept adding up, which is great. Kids, I was there for the delivery day, and kids not only sent them to their own friends, but also to teachers and Ms. Binkowski and Ms. Angelo, and so it was nice to see that it wasn't just to their friends or girlfriends or...
They're getting me not Flores tough with that one.
Yes, they did. And I know the middle school's working on some sort of athletic event for, or outdoor event for late winter, early spring, which would be good. The Special Education Committee, I will say, I'm very happy that we've been working with them over the last couple of years. COVID was tough, but now this year, we're starting to pick things up. We've gotten them connected to the schools a little bit better, so they've hosted a meet and greet. They're hosting another meet and greet. And so I just think that they're really happy to be connected or more connected to the communities, and they're looking to get funding for PPT folders to give out to all the families. So that is Monica Hatton and Keisha Grant, who've been working really, really hard to do that. Last night at the Connecticut PTA meeting, we had the Attorney General present, and so we had about an hour session before the actual Board of PTA meeting started, when he talked about the effects of social media on our youth and on students. And it was a really important conversation. I think that it would be important to bring that back to our district somehow so we can kind of talk about this at another time, but I would love to see some sort of forum with parents and students to talk about those issues, to then bring back to the Attorney General, because they're going to, not attack, but they're going to approach these social media platforms like Twitter, like TikTok, and, let's see, what's, I don't know, Snapchat, whatever, and to just sort of say, like, you need to be accountable for this. Like, when kids develop these, all these other accounts that are aliases, they don't, you know, under the same IP address, they need to hold them accountable. And so it was a really, it was a nice conversation. So I would like to see something focused around that here in our district to bring back to them.
Probably something both adults and students can learn a lot from.
One hundred percent. And so I think that all of you would feel the same. So whether it's before the end of this school year or the beginning of next school year, I'm happy to be part of that conversation. So I think that's important. And lastly, PTA turns one-hundred-and-twenty-five this year. It's our one-twentieth anniversary. So PTA, National PTA is pushing a big effort to do something, whether it's cultural arts or health and wellness. We have been tossing around some ideas of what we can do to celebrate, but we will be coming at the schools with something, to do something before the school year's end, whether it's a big birthday party for PTA, or if it's like a health and wellness fair or something. But look forward to that. So that's it. Thank you.
I have just one question regarding the Scholastic Book Fair. I'm not sure, but you can answer, who can answer it? I love book fairs, but I also know that you have things of all different prices. I also know we have students from all different backgrounds. How do we ensure that there's fairness? And do we have money set aside for students whose family cannot afford to give them? I'm not sure what the books or things cost anymore, but I'll just say to give that ten dollars, especially now that we have gas at five dollars a gallon, you know, how do we address that? I always worry about that with my kids.
Yeah, so I mean, typically, at least at Ridge Road, I'm not sure, I can't account for any other school, but we always had a teacher wishlist. I wonder if individual teachers could then come up with a sort of a list that then they could give them to families that they know in their particular class. But the wishlist is basically a bin of books that the teacher picks out, and then parents who are shopping can say, you know, I'm going to buy this book for my teacher's classroom, whether it goes to the classroom or it goes to a student. I think that's a very good point to bring up, and I think that we can encourage that.
Because I just know visualize that student coming in and his friends are buying, I don't, again, coloring books or... We're past just, we just have books now, right?
There's still some other stuff, highlighters, erasers.
So there's always that stuff that that child's coming in with maybe a dollar and there's nothing that he or she could buy.
I think partially, they have set them up so that it's not the traditional way that it used to be of, they file the class in and everybody can pick something out, and then they file them out, and there's the one kid sitting there who feels like they couldn't purchase anything. They often can put money into their, parents can put money into the account in advance or have the child bring money, but they can purchase like before school, they can purchase at different times during the day so that it's not, it doesn't really single anybody out as well, which I think is also important. Because I know even for myself, I've said to my son at times, like, I just bought you six books and you haven't read them. We're not going in there and buying more books right now because you've got to read these first. So I try to at least encourage him, like, listen, we're not going to buy something every time. So hopefully, it's being somewhat managed, but I do think that, to your point, we could set up something more where through the social worker, however it happens, that if there's somebody who needs a little bit of assistance there, it could certainly be done.
Most likely already being done, because I know it's always been done for nature's classroom
Right.
and other things. But I'd just like to keep bringing it up to make sure that it's always there, and that all the people know that these are the things that the district does, does do, or does help out with families.
And books are so important, so...
Keep them off social media.
But yes, we will bring that back to our board.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is that, wasn't that bad, your first one? Next, we're going to, I guess, just go to my part. I don't have much to go on from last month's meeting till today, but I do just want to let you know that we have begun the process to create a new moniker for our Nighthawks mascot, and we will be sharing some information at our next meetings. So just want people to know that that's moving ahead. And from there, we'll go to the report of our standing committees. We'll start with ACES. Amanda?
Thanks. I wasn't actually able to attend the meeting today, but I did get notes from it, and they referenced teacher residency program, which is being looked at for ACES for sure, because hiring is still a challenge. They're looking at potentially selling property in New Haven and adding at least three positions to staff.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction and planning?
I'll get that report.
Okay, thanks, Mon.
Our CNI committee has held a couple of meetings. We met on December thirteenth, and at that meeting, the group approved various new course proposals for the high school program of studies for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. These include three UConn Early College Experience courses, Introduction to Allied Health Professions, Chemistry, and Elementary Discreet Mathematics, as well as two PE electives, one quad lifelong games, and Resistance and Mindful Training, and a World Language and Cultures Exploratory Course, as well as the Connecticut State Department of Education Required Elective African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican and Latino Studies Course. These are all electives and up to families and students to select. We have just finished our selection process for course registration, so in time, students will know what courses they are in. On that night, the group also approved a new textbook called Conceptual Physics and two new clubs, a Japanese language club at the middle school and a club called Athletes and Activists at the high school. These clubs are submitted to the respective school's administration, and they primarily are student-generated, so they're really a nice way for kids to have a way to come up with ideas that they're interested in. The group then met again on January sixth. At this meeting, it was determined that Mr. Salomini is going to be our chair. And thank you, Joe. And moving forward, he will provide these reports to the committee, and the members graciously decided to take turns taking the minutes at the meeting, so we've made a lot of progress. But at that meeting, I discussed a proposal with the group to combine our current library and computer specials or unified arts, whichever you want to call it, into one library-media course, which will allot time for checking out books, learning technology, computer skills, and focusing on digital citizenship. And then we would add a new special or unified arts for science and STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And this would be for students in kindergarten through grade five. And this class will focus on the next-generation science standards as well as STEM. And it will result in the five unified arts, which make it so that the elementary teachers can have their preparatory period each day to become art, music, library-media, physical education, and then this new science STEM course. So it's really a way that we can begin to make certain that we are getting all of our science standards in, and it's time to make a change from having library and computer separated. They really should be embedded together. So the group talked about that and approved moving that forward, and Howard and I are working to find ways to fund that for next year. Lastly, at the same meeting, a new chess club at North Haven Middle School was proposed and approved. And we had a third meeting, and that was on February tenth. Our K-5 coordinators, Tracy Gambardella and Jody Wilcox, presented to the group. They highlighted the curriculum in language arts and math at the elementary level. They shared student materials, teacher resources, answered questions. And also at this meeting, the group approved a Lego club at the middle school and a Model UN club at the high school. and a Model UN club at the high school. And now you're up to speed. And next month, Joe will report out on tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I like the idea of the Model UN.
Yeah, I mean, the kids have really been coming up with some great clubs, particularly at the middle school, which hadn't had as many, which is really nice. And Patrick Lawrence is kind of our club liaison at the high school. So it's really working out nicely.
Right, thank you. Good, good choices there, Patrick, from our, our students.
And just one other thing, we have to thank many of the teachers who volunteer their time. And, you know, they don't necessarily get stipends for doing those clubs. And it's really great when they work alongside students who wanna generate something.
That's really great. North Haven Education Foundation, I think we can say Bernie spoke for us tonight. Next, we can go to policy, which is a first read of the policy regarding prohibit, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. This is a personnel issue.
Yeah, it's just a first read for the board and it's directly from the shipment in Goodwin Model Policies. So we'll talk more after the first read.
Okay. Next, PTA council? They covered it now. Yes, I think we'll probably be able to take that off here and as part of what you share as parent reps, you know, from what you get from the community and what you get here. Well, we'll put PTA council under you now going forward. Next, we have staff communications and our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. All right, I'm just gonna hop on what Xena said earlier this evening. This is our banner that was presented to us from the CIAC in recognition of our unified sports program at the high school. It was really a great event last week. We had a basketball tournament and we hosted one with Hampton, Cheshire, and Lyman Hall. And it was really well attended by students, staff, people from the community. And we presented this banner and it will hang proudly in the Fred Kelly Gymnasium. Just a big thank you to our coaches, Ms. Vivenzio, Ms. Gallagher, and our A.D., Mr. Blumenthal also. And if I can just direct the board's attention that way, that is our new vision of a graduate graphic. It was created by a high school, a high school senior, Jason Phan, with support from Diana Blythe, the coordinator of the art department. And this really just caps, kind of captures our vision of a graduate that I'm so thankful that the board approved in December. And we're gonna use this throughout all of our schools beginning next year and help us create a foundation for the work going forward and really, you know, market it. So, thank you, Jason, thank you, Diana. All right, so moving on to the district calendar. Before we get to next year, I did wanna talk a little bit about this year. We've had a few snow days. So as it stands right now, we are at June 21st for our 180th day of school. That is a Tuesday. Thank you again to the board for, for giving that one day, or else we'd be here till Wednesday. So a little thing I wanted to mention regarding this year, Juneteenth is now a federal holiday, just this past year. And Juneteenth is traditionally on June 19th. However, that's a Sunday, so it's observed on the 20th. It is a federal holiday, not a state holiday, so we're not mandated to take it off as a district. But it's just a note I wanted to put out to the board in case they, they wanted to have, wanted to have a discussion around it. Graduation, graduation, we're proposing, Dr. Dallin and I, for Friday, June 17th. Normally, we like to stay away from Fridays, but the way the calendar is laid out this year, I think Friday would probably be the best day for it. And even if there are more snow days, please no more snow days. But even if there are more snow days, we'll still continue with that day once it's set, if the board is agreeable to that. Plus, there is potentially some construction going to be done to the track at Vannacore. So having a set date would be very helpful in looking at alternate locations if needed. I mean, the high school gym is also a venue that we could access, but I think Dr. Dallin is looking at other places as well.
Will it affect the senior fellow, that they graduating on the 17th and the last day of school is the 21st?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's not always the last day.
That's probably a question somebody's gonna ask, so I just want to, okay.
Can we talk about Juneteenth? Yeah, it's, so there are 10 federal holidays. That would be the only one that is not represented on our calendar. And I'm wondering if there's a plan to incorporate it. So last year would have been, the news for Juneteenth came out last year, kind of late in the game. It was a springtime release, so I can understand that that would be a tricky one. But I would like to have some discussion around adding that to our calendar.
Well, typically, we're not in school on June 19th. And so they, you know, the way I look at it, typically, we don't have that to add because we're out of school by June 19th. The way, and also for this year, to add it to the school, we're going to school to, to the 21st. We take off the 20th, we're asking students to come the 21st, and then again on the 22nd. And it's not a state holiday right now. I think for this year, it's something that we, we don't have on our calendar. But for future years, we take a look at it and decide what, what we wanna do.
And will we be able to add that to the discussion for the calendar that we're approving tonight for next year? Because we, you're right, we typically don't go till that late. But I think it's something that as a contingency, like, we don't have to put 4th of July on there, right? Because we're never in school around 4th of July. So that's not something that we need to include. But I think that, to put it on there, that if we're still in school, that that would be a day that we would consider taking off. It is a, it would be the only federal holiday that we wouldn't be recognizing as a board. And I have questions as to why that would be.
Do you know what I would like to say?
I think we could put like an asterisk on the, the calendar and just say, like, if, if we do have X number of snow days that would push us out past the 19th, especially since next year, the 19th is a Monday. I agree with you. I think it's something that we should be celebrating if we're in school to do it.
It's almost like the way we have that contingency. If we have too many snow days on the April break, we denote it on the calendar so everybody's aware.
Right, so you can put that ahead of time so that it would be there. I mean, perhaps adding it to this calendar moving forward if people feel like this year isn't enough notice. But I really feel like if we could talk about that with the 2223 calendar, especially since it's not on a Sunday. Right, this year, folks want to celebrate on the 19th, on actual Juneteenth. That is, rather than observe, that's a possibility for families on the Sunday. But I think for the next several years now, since the calendar's gonna move forward, this is gonna be, families stand to be impacted.
So you're saying this would be the only federal holiday that we don't have on our calendar?
Yeah, so the, so the federal holidays, I was looking into this. What we have right now... Sorry. Okay, so currently, the 2022 holidays, the federal holidays are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, George Washington's Birthday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Out of all of those, Juneteenth would be the only one that isn't represented on our calendar.
The Veterans Day, do we, our teachers work on Veterans Day?
No.
We don't do our product development on that?
We do, and Election Day.
And Election Day, okay.
Alida?
Yes, Jen?
Can I add to the conversation? Patrick, in terms of other districts, what are they thinking about in terms of that holiday?
In terms of Juneteenth, again, many of the districts are out of school by then. And the couple districts that I've spoken to are having the same conversations with their board because this is the first time that it's come up as a federal holiday.
I can speak for Middletown, I'm off on Juneteenth, we have no school.
Okay.
Not all districts have Columbus Day and Veterans Day off, though, correct?
Correct. My home district, where I live, my girls go to school on, on Veterans Day.
Go ahead, Goldie.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should take a strong look at it, you know, in terms of adding it to, to our calendar.
Okay. Well, I think what we should do is, and my thought is, again, we do not add it for this year. I think we can recognize the day, but I don't feel that we should take the Monday off. We are, as I stated before, we're going to school to the 21st. And to extend that to the 22nd, when we, I know it's only one day and we know what the heat can get like in those elementary schools. I think for this year, we recognize the day, but we don't take the day off. But that's me, everybody, my thought as a board chair going on. But moving forward, we have it on the calendar as we have our other federal holidays, if we should go to school past June 19th.
Are we talking about the 2023 calendar now? Or are we gonna talk about that when we talk about the calendar for next year?
That's the 20...
2223 calendar.
Yeah, so this would be the 2324 calendar it would be on, right?
2223.
2223.
Right, we're in 20, I'm sorry, 2223.
I didn't know if we were done with, I didn't know if we were moving into that discussion yet.
No, we're not. But this is what I'm just saying, and these are my comments, you know, as we, as we move forward. But I don't think you should, we should observe that as a school holiday this year.
What would happen if you did have more snow days and the extension went out past the 21st? Then your argument for not recognizing it kind of goes new.
Well, because then if, so we have one more day, then it's the 22nd. I, I would still get the same argument for this year.
We've already taken out a day from this year as well. And we've already added a half day, plus all the half days that get added for conferences this year that aren't originally on the calendar, or I probably may have missed them. So I think we've already made a lot of changes to the calendar this year.
I'd support making one more. Like, I'd be okay if we wanted to do this. But if it's too short notice for folks to, I think putting it on next year's calendar would be great.
What's your school district do?
We have it off.
You have it off? This year?
Yeah. Do you have Columbus Day and Veterans Day off too?
Oh, you put me to the test. It's a long time ago.
Yeah, we have both of those off.
I think we do, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think we could also talk within districts about not having a Veterans Day. Not in our district, but in others, like down there.
I just feel like every year, the kids get out of school later and later and later, and then more snow days happen. And then we have an issue at the elementary schools with air conditioning. So those last, that, that last week, those last couple weeks end up becoming half days anyway. So, I mean, I, and I, again, my own opinion, right? I, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to shorten the calendar versus extending it more, if that makes sense. So they're getting out of school a little bit earlier and then it kind of will offset that issue of the elementary school, because it's hot in there. Like, I know, like, I always joke with the kids, like, we didn't have air conditioning and blah, blah. But you go in there to help and, I mean, you're like melting in the seed in the middle of June. It's hot. So, I mean, that's my only thing. But the end of the school year gets so dicey with the weather for elementary school.
I'd really love for us to address the root cause of that, though, and like, figure out, and I know it's on the agenda, so I don't wanna belabor the point too much, but like, getting air conditioning in those schools is gonna really help, give us a lot more flexibility about that. I realize that that's not a realistic option for this year, you know? Probably not next year either, yeah.
Or the year after.
That's like...
Wait, what year do your kids graduate?
Poor Oliver.
It's a lot of money. The only thing I would say is, I would hate to have that holiday penalized because we're trying to shorten the calendar. You know, I think, given equal weight to all the federal holidays. And if your concern is about length, then we should look at all the holidays.
That's what I'm actually saying.
Okay, I didn't understand that. But, yeah, I would, I would hate to single out that one.
No, I'm not signaling anything out.
Okay.
I'm saying across the board.
Across the board, good to know.
And then kids can actually do stuff during that day, on that day, to learn about that day. That would be good, yes.
I would actually advocate them to have school on Veterans Day.
Like, Veterans Day, we have veterans come in and talk to them and do, like, stuff.
Yeah, because we know they're not home doing anything about veterans. They're, you know...
I'm usually trying to find who's gonna watch them, because we're still working.
And I know that has, like, an effect on different kinds of contracts of different people that...
Right, that's why, I don't know, that's why I'm just throwing it out there.
It's beyond, like, a calendar conversation, but I would like to entertain something like that, too.
When did June, when did it become a federal holiday?
Last break.
Last break, okay.
So I don't know if that leads us into 2223.
Sorry.
No, it's good, I think they all go together. So we just jumped into 2223. The proposed calendar was in the board packet. And just a few things I wanna bring to the attention of the board. The first day of school for next year is proposed is August 31st. I believe it's a Wednesday. If you look at the proposal for April break, it's actually a week earlier in 2023, just aligned with Good Friday, like it does in every other year. It tends to fall on the third week. And the last day of school for next year is June 14th, which is not really too different than this year, which fell on June 15th, if we didn't have the snow days. I also wanted to make mention, earlier, was it earlier this year or later last year? I think it was earlier this year. Aleni, Jen, and myself met with a teacher from the high school, Axsa Cologne, and a couple high school students. And they proposed, including the holiday Eid, it's a Muslim holiday, into the upcoming calendar. So I just wanted to put that out there to, for the board to discuss as well. And I don't wanna jump on Jen or Aleni's shoes in case they wanna share anything as well. So that's really the gist of the calendar as it stands, proposed. Obviously, there's some changes that can be made, so.
Did any of the kids, was, is anyone able to come speak to us tonight?
Um, when I spoke to, emailed Axsa, she said that they had planned to come. I don't see the...
Yeah, I was definitely supporting the students and Axsa in their request to have Eid off. Eid is the highest Muslim holiday. And to have school open and have it be a day where we don't schedule things. Like, for instance, last year, the, last year, Junior Awards was held on Eid. And that's tricky, very tricky for families. Because as one of the students described, it would be like getting up Christmas morning, opening your presents really fast and having to go to school. And although teachers may not be giving new work or new assignments, that's something that we could put in place from our end. Once kids get older, especially, they want to go to school, they don't wanna miss school. It's, it's an awful lot. And I know that Eid is a holiday that disproportionately, if we were to have school, would disproportionately impact families of color. And I think if we're talking about disproportionate impact, when we talk about it with sports, we look at, does this disproportionately impact women? Then it's a title line issue, right? But when we're talking about holidays, and I know that we can't, you know, have every single holiday off, like we said, or we do end up getting into very late June. However, we have a growing Muslim population in town. And I feel like this, have not having Eid off is disproportionately impacting our black and brown families. And I think that's something that we need to take a look at. And I think that it's also something that warrants a really good discussion.
And, you know, I support what you just said, Jen. And I have looked at when Eid falls for the 2223 year. And it looks like it falls, it starts Friday night on April 21st and then goes to Saturday, April 22nd. And that's sort of the Friday after where April break is proposed. And we have Good Friday off, two Fridays prior to that. But there's also a half day, a half day professional development day, the Thursday prior to Good Friday there, too. So I think there's like a lot of time off in that, in that little window. And I, I'm wondering if we can, like, maybe shift something to be able to accommodate Eid and, and be able to, to offer that to our Muslim students and teachers?
I did a little research and I, I printed out, I looked at our 24 districts in our DIRG. And there are two districts within our DIRG, Weathersfield and Berlin, that have what's called, they call them special observance days. And I made copies of the calendar for the board. I'm gonna split them up for each district. And it's just a reference to look at. Each of them, each of the districts handles it a little bit different. But just as a reference, if we're looking to make some adjustments, I'll start.
Can I piggyback on the conversation? So I hear what Jen and Amanda are saying. The thing I'd like us all to take into consideration is that there are, if we look at the Weathersfield calendar, for instance, I mean, I was gonna say, let's look at the special observance days because there are a number of holidays that there are kids in our schools that fall into the same sort of predicament when they get up and, you know, there's a holiday that they celebrate religiously, ethnically, whatever it may be, and they have to make the decision whether or not they're gonna go to school or if they're gonna stay home, sort of thing. So I just want us to make sure that we are looking at it also holistically because it does definitely affect that populate, that... because it does definitely affect, uh, that populate, our Muslim population, and I, I, they were so wonderful when they came here, and I heard them loud and clear. But I do want us to make sure that we're considering that across the board, um, because there are a lot of other holidays that other families are faced with the same type of decision, or I don't want to call it an issue, but decision-making within the house where, you know, family says, you're not going to school today, and the kid's like, well, I got to go to school because I have A, B, and C, but culturally, ethnically, religiously, you know, the student really shouldn't be going to school and should not be penalized for going to school based on their background. And you could see, I mean, there's a ton, what is this, Weathersfield, on the Weathersfield calendar?
Yeah.
I think the Weathersfield one is more comprehensive than the Berlin one, so, I mean, just take a minute and, and look at it, but I think we need to make sure that we consider that.
I think they mean different things, too. I think that's a really good point, Alani, and have we gotten any other, like, I know we got a proposal on having Eid off from these folks. Have we gotten proposals from anybody else to request days off?
Yeah, I have not.
Because I respect the hustle, too. Like, I like the gumption, and if you're going to bring us a proposal, I, I feel like, um, makes me, me, makes me feel better about it, and I know that Eid is, like, it's a, it's a huge deal.
Some of these are a huge deal, though, too.
Oh, definitely, but like, I think Diwali's on here, and that's, it's a big one, but I know that people typically come to work, uh, when they're celebrating Diwali. We have big Diwali celebrations, um, in my last three jobs, and it hasn't been, like, an issue to come to work, whereas Eid, people that I work with typically don't come to work on Eid.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen just the opposite, too.
You could take Easter, though, for instance, too, and there's different Easters, there's different Good Fridays.
Oh, totally, but we have, and, and I'm not saying that everybody should celebrate the, the one Good Friday here, but I, I haven't seen anything from any of the populations of folks who celebrate different Easters or different Good Fridays, asking for a different dispensation. And we got a request for a special dispensation on Eid, or it's not special dispensation, that's the wrong word, but to have Eid be included in the holiday calendar, I'm, I'm for it.
I am, I am, I also feel like Eid disproportionately impacts families of color compared to our other holidays, and I think that's something that we also have to take into account.
Patrick, can you, uh, what, in terms of the, what you said observance, you said other districts do do observance of that day, what exactly does that entail in terms of observance?
So, in some of the other districts, if I just read it, Goldie, from the Berlin calendar, it says faculty will make appropriate accommodations for students affected by these and other special observance days. Uh, these holidays begin at sundown, actually, the ones that are highlighted are asterisk, begin at sundown on the evening before the date specified. So, really, I think what that means is, um, there, there are no, as Jen mentioned earlier, no after-school activities, so we wouldn't have a, a Junior Awards night on a, on a special observance day.
For major tests.
A major, yeah, major exam, things like that. So teachers would be aware, and they'd be able to schedule around that.
Okay, are they scheduling around the specific, uh, students, or they're scheduling it around the entire school?
Entire schools.
Entire school.
Entire school.
Okay, so I, I mean, my, my, I am all for some kind of observer, this is just my personal opinion, but in terms of, uh, the entire school being affected, you know, I am not sure if, you know, if that is the, the best way to resolve this, uh, this issue. You know, so I give an example, you know, some, I know this is more like colleges and universities, but they typically would do, especially around the Jewish holidays, is they would make some kind of provision for students who are of Jewish faith, you know, to basically, the excuse for making exams, the absence, just things like that. So their faculty or their professors would be asked to make accommodations for them. So that's how those issues were, were handled, and to me, that sounds like, you know, a, um, a comfortable, you know, uh, resolution to, uh, uh, to this, uh, issue, you know, because at the end of the day, there are so many, you know, religious practices and also ethnic practices that our students, you know, and our, you know, individuals in the.
Oh.
muted.
Oh, no.
Oh, if he's, is he in the car? Does that happen?
He's still in the train.
That's, that's the question, you know, for me. So I think being able to adopt something that would, you know, have them have like an excuse, absence, or something like that, to observe their religion, I think that would be a good, you know, a good resolution. That's my opinion.
But we have the Jewish holidays off.
Which, what's the?
Yeah, so his.
What's the date of our April, you said?
This year?
Next year.
Next year, um, it is scheduled for the, I believe, the week of the tenth.
Tenth to the fourteenth. Oh, I guess seventh.
It's the seventh through the fourteenth.
No, I'm sorry.
Good Friday.
Are you looking, Jen, for us?
Can you move that back a week?
No, I think, Jen, you're looking to get this on this year?
I'm saying, if you move it back a week, that covers that day also, correct?
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, next year.
Next year, okay.
But I think to Goldie's point, though, and to the point that the students were making when they came here, and just from my own personal, um, dealing with this and pulling my own kids out of school, it, it's hard for, you know, some, sometimes it's hard for someone to be like, can you make this concession for me? So I think if it was like a global, you know, on the calendar, and it was like observed, this is a special holiday, we're not going to have A, B, and C as a district versus.
You mean, we're not going to have the Honor Society, we're not going to have testing, as you're saying, okay.
Across the board, so then nobody feels like.
Or reviews, good point.
Right, so then nobody feels like, oh, it's, you know, it's, you know, sometimes the kids are uncomfortable asking for permission like that, you know what I mean? So I think if it's on there, it's an asterisk, we know on Eid, there's going to be nothing major, no tests, not, so that then those students are more comfortable not coming to school, not feeling like, you know, they're singled out, or for any of these, the student is then more comfortable taking that excused absence and staying home.
But what would you say about athletics on that day?
I don't think athletics should be on that day either.
No, yeah, that's a resolution, that's just, that, that makes sense, I mean.
I, we, I, we battled the athletics thing a lot, especially with Easter. So, I, that's why I, I get what you're saying, I get what the students are saying, I, I feel for them, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all of them.
If that's the case, then do we take a look at other things? Like I said, we have the Jewish holidays on here, and those are two, and so by the same token, do we change?
That's, I mean, the whole calendar is open for discussion. I feel like I talk way too much already, so.
You know, I feel like it has to be consistent and to do, you know, so I, I'm not sure what to say, but I just know that Judeo-Christian holidays are reflected on our calendar quite a bit.
And they have been for, well, over thirty years.
But the face of our district is changing, so I think that's something that we need to take a look at.
I feel like the reasoning behind, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree with it, but I think the reasoning behind Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Easter, is that it also affects a lot of our staff. So if our staff were to take off, if we were to make that an optional holiday, or, you know, like an excuse to observance holiday, and our staff took off it, we probably would not be able to hold school, because they are the more dominant religions, I would probably say, right? I mean, I don't know numbers, I don't know statistics, so I could be off on that statement. Um, but I think since I've been a kid, those days have been the days where we've always had off. I don't know if that's the reasoning behind it now. If it's not, maybe it is something that we look at. But I kind of agree with, um, Goldie in saying that if we listed all of these as observance days, like Weathersfield did, I think that kind of, um, meets what you're saying, Jen, because it kind of hits every group. Some families will, um, celebrate some holidays more than others, and so I think that's.
Are there, I'm sorry, the Jewish holidays are on their, under their special observances and not off.
The Jewish holidays.
The, the Yom Kippur is on here, yeah.
And not off.
Yeah, and not off. And Rosh Hashanah, right, they are in school for those. That's what I, that, I guess I, I, I agree with a lot of those points for those special observance days, but I think we need to take a look at what we've already have, what we already have in place, if that's the case.
Well, I think to look at what's going to be in place isn't going to happen, um, at this meeting here tonight, or it can be resolved in one, one next meeting. I think what would have to happen is this board would have to put together a committee to talk about Veterans Day, to talk about Columbus Day, um, to talk about Eid, to talk about any of the Jewish holidays. I, I don't think it's going to be something that can be resolved right now. I think it's something that is actually probably going to take a lot of thought, a lot of research, and a lot of data before we add or take off any calendars, dates.
Just, uh, as far as research goes, Joyce and I made a, a phone call over to the town just to see if we could get a picture of, uh, religious affiliation, and unfortunately, they didn't have that, that data for us. Um, Joyce did find something on the internet, I don't know if it's accurate, I don't have, it, it's a town report, and I can read it to you, I don't have, I, I can't say that it's, um, accurate or inaccurate, but, um, it says North Haven, Connecticut, forty-nine point two percent of the people in North Haven are considered religious, and it states here that thirty-six percent are Catholic, one point three percent are, uh, are, are Jewish, and point five percent affiliate with Islam. So, again, I don't know if that's accurate, but that's the best that we could get as far as percentages go.
So that was probably done in the last census, maybe?
The ten, yes.
Patrick, do you, when does the district calendar have to be approved by?
So, as it, as a district, the board, um, usually votes on it in April, and that's traditionally later than other districts vote on their calendar, many of them have them approved already. Um, and we are already receiving calls about when the first day of school is, um, and those types of things. So, the quicker it can get done, the better. I do think if, if the board chooses to, um, discuss it further, maybe just establishing the first day of school tonight and moving forward with the rest of the year might be something that, that we could do, but, uh, go ahead.
I do have a proposal, because I, I like the idea of, you know, kind of talking through the holidays that we celebrate. I love the idea of going to school on Veterans Day and talking to veterans. I think that's like amazing, and I think that that warrants more discussion. So maybe we can take two tracks here. I would propose, and we have to vote on this, right? So like, I would propose that we make a motion to amend the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar that would include an asterisk for Juneteenth, as well as including Eid for twenty-two, twenty-three. So have the twenty-first off in April, and then we can kind of revisit all of the holidays holistically and talk through how we want to celeb, celebrate them, observe them, moving forward.
So can I just ask a question? What makes, and I don't mean to sound critical when I ask this question this way, but how can we say that Eid is more important than the Greek Orthodox Easter or Three Kings Day or Panza? I don't know if we can necessarily, um, say one is more important than the other. So if we give an asterisk for Eid, are we then saying we have to give an asterisk for everything as opposed to having this special observance for everything, so that it doesn't affect the system as a whole, but only the people that it specifically pertains to?
So the way I'm thinking about it is this would be for next year, and then we have a committee that evaluates what we're going to celebrate slash observe moving forward. To my knowledge, and to Patrick's knowledge, we haven't gotten any requests or proposals for Three Kings Day or, um, or Greek Orthodox Easter, so they have asked. And I think that for a one, for one year, I don't think it's unreasonable to say, like, yeah, sure, we can do it for one year, and then we're going to revisit all of the holidays on the whole, moving forward as a group, and figure out, um, what the most logical way to move forward is. Can't we just revisit all of them?
Yeah, my only issue with, with what you're saying there, I guess there's two, right? One, to your point earlier of, we have the seventh, the sixth is a half-day, the seventh through the fourteenth is off, and then if we say we're going to take the twenty-first off, that's a lot of time in April, and that, that has a, a real impact on in-classroom education, right? I mean, because you're breaking up three weeks at that point, you're going three weeks where you don't have five days of in-class. That's one. Two, um, trying to think how to word this so it makes sense somewhere besides inside my head. So, I understand your point of saying, they've come to us and they've asked for the day, right? And I give them, whoever, whoever has the foresight to put something together and come to the board or any, any body, right, they, they're a step ahead. But I think what that's done is it prompted us to say, maybe we really need to reevaluate this whole thing. And this whole, by this whole thing, I mean the whole calendar and all the days off. And if we say now, we're going to give you this day off, while we discuss everything else, what's to say during that period of time, four other groups don't come to us and say, we'd like that day off? And then we're going backwards from our position of trying to shorten the school year and get kids out sooner to keeping kids in there longer. I just think it should all be lumped in as one thing, rather than piecemealing it.
I would love it if other, other religions or affiliations would come to us and ask us, um, to consider different things. I think it's great, and like I said before, I totally respect the hustle, but I don't want to solve for a problem we don't have, right? The problem we have now as a board is that we got a proposal on Eid, and it's whether or not to allow that for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I totally respect everything you're saying, Joe, and I agree that we need to revisit the whole thing, and I think we should, you know, revisit the whole thing and look at it carefully, and if we do get requests from four other groups, let's talk about them, let's, let's form a committee and, and dig in.
I don't think we're solving for a problem we don't have, I think we're creating a problem that we don't have if we do it the way that you're proposing. That's, that's just how, I, I just look at it as, we're, we're making work and we're making future decisions for us as a board harder than looking at it holistically.
I think this proposal actually gave us an opportunity to then take a better approach to our calendar. I don't see it as a problem, I see that this group of people came to us and they did such a great job that now it's sparking our conversation as an opportunity to, like, take a look at our calendar holistically versus viewing it as a problem. And I, if we put a committee together, I mean, we could probably move this pretty, not quickly, but efficiently, right, to, to look at this for even the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
That's a good point, right? We don't, like, we could theoretically, like, approve the calendar, maybe with the asterisks for Juneteenth tonight, and then could we revisit and approve additional holidays or addition, whatever the committee decides at a later date?
I don't, I don't think, personally, I don't think we should approve any asterisks until the full conversation happens. Because if we're talking about other federal holidays, we need to talk about all of them, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page with, uh, Joe and, and Alani, I think, uh, this issue is so important
that it makes sense for us to pause and, you know, let the current status, you know, be as it is, and then sort of sit down on a committee level and talk about this and figure out the policy or process moving forward. If we're focused on the next, uh, academic year, then let the committee do its work and do its work on time. But if we're focused on the academic year after next, then the committee has more time to do its work. But either way, I think we just don't make any decisions tonight, set up a committee to take a look at it, and I'm happy to be on that, uh, on that committee.
I'd be happy to be on it, too.
I mean, June first is, what, March eighth, like, months away. We could probably say that we'll have it done by June first, but acknowledge the first day of school if people want to know that for summer vacations. And June first is still before the end of the school year, so can we do something like that?
The board can choose to do that, sure. I do think it's important to have the first day of school set.
Of course, yeah.
Right.
For families of.
Even up until end of, or close to, yeah.
See, the only, um, thing I was thinking about, sorry, I know your hand was like.
This one?
Through Amanda's point is, I believe Eid on the twenty-first starts at sundown on the twenty-first, and I think for the Jewish holidays, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we celebrate the following day. So, for example, on October fifth, I believe, is Yom Kippur. It starts on the fourth, I believe, at sundown, and then we have the fifth off. So, for this year, I think as a technical point for this year alone, it would, the twenty-first, if we followed the way we handled other holidays that began at sundown, would necessarily need to be a day off this upcoming year, because it would be the following day? More of a question than a statement?
Oh, because it's a Friday, or so the twenty-first is a Friday, gotcha. So we don't take the day of the Eve that begins, we take the full next day.
That's a good point.
Because that's the full day that they celebrate until sundown that day.
I think that's why some years, there's two Jewish holidays that we observe in the calendar versus one, because it depends on what day the kids fall off.
I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with us not giving parents, like, a good idea of what's going to be off, like, sooner rather than later, like, in June, like, I'm, I'm a planner, so I like understanding when April break is going to be sooner rather than later. And having stuff up in flux, like, having everything except for the first day of school up in flux until June kind of makes me feel a little squishy about it, I don't know.
Really? I used to not find out until the summer, or June, what, July, what the calendar would be for the last.
We start calling in-laws to come up here from South Carolina to babysit, like, now, so, um, but. So, but I fully support putting together a committee that would like address everything. I'm just wondering if that committee should apply to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as opposed to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? Especially if Eid is now on a, it's not now, but if it's on a Saturday, if we would observe it on a Saturday, maybe that takes that one piece out of it for now?
I think that if we're gonna have the conversation, it takes place for the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar or we don't change anything until twenty-three, twenty-four when the conversation takes place.
That's what I was gonna say.
I don't think that you can pick one holiday and not address the rest of the conversation just because, and again, acknowledging good credit to whoever it was that came to speak. I wasn't here for that. But I heard it was wonderful.
Yes, they were, they were wonderful.
And then we had also gotten a letter prior to that. We got a letter. It was great. But I, but, and good for them for doing that. But whoever said it before, like, you know, there could be five or six or seven or 10 other groups that could come within the next month. And so until we have the conversation of how we really want to address all of these days, religious, Veterans Day, Columbia, whatever it is, I think we need to have the whole conversation. So before we make any changes, the conversation has to take place as opposed to just picking one or two changes first.
So you're saying not adding Juneteenth, which would be the only federal holiday not represented on our calendar?
For this year?
For twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right. What I'm saying is let's, let's have the conversation for twenty-two, twenty-three and include everything because it would be a change to our, what we've been doing past practices. And I think we would all agree that there should be some adjustments. But what those adjustments are needs to have a discussion.
But, and then you were saying if we're not gonna have the, if we don't have enough time or if we decide that we don't have enough time to make those decisions for twenty-two, no, yeah, for twenty-two, twenty-three, the calendar should stay as is until we can have that discussion for the changes for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you can just nitpick certain things. And I don't mean to, you know, minimize any of them. But I don't know how we go about and choose which ones we should apply.
So basically, we say that we approve the calendar as is today. But note that the calendar, the, the board will be putting together a committee to review the calendar, including the twenty-two, twenty-three, the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar and twenty-three, twenty-four going forward. That we may make modifications or amendment to the, to the calendar at, in June of this year.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that the committee could come together and figure it out by June first before the end of the school year. No? I don't know.
So I think now that the board has entertained this conversation, it may open doors for other people to, to want to approach and have conversations. And the other part that Melinda just mentioned is some of these days are actually contractual days within some of our yearly contracts. So we're gonna have to really look into that to see. We can't open schools if the custodians aren't there for the day. So it's something that is gonna take some digging into as well.
So, and I'm not putting words into your mouth. Tell me if I am. But are you saying that you, with all that sort of other moving pieces in the background, there may not be enough time to change the calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three year?
I'm hesitant doing, I'm hesitant not approving it tonight simply because like it's later in the year and I think parents have traditionally expected this calendar to be finalized by April. And I'd worry and, as Amanda said, there are more parents like Amanda that plan for this and, yeah. So, I mean, as, as a bare minimum, the start of the school year, I would think we'd at least need to be approved today. But at all costs, I do think the calendar, if we could, the board could move forward on that tonight.
I have another suggestion though. Maybe we could, is it possible to add the special observance days? Since that doesn't change contractual stuff? And, but it would, it would allow staff to know that. So if we can't change this, right? I understand, I totally understand that this is kind of an eleventh hour thing for some families who are already booking next April vacation, not even twenty-twenty-two, but they're already looking at Disney for twenty-twenty-three. I get that. Are we able to then say, since we can't change contractual stuff for the staff, can we say, we come together somehow and come up with a list of special observance days to then work with staff to say, these are days where we are not gonna have any new stuff?
So I believe that wouldn't impact the count, the days themselves? And so that's more administrative side of things? So I think that can, I think that can be accomplished.
That can happen and then we can talk to, so at least, it's like a, you know, it's a, it's a smaller step, but it's a step still. And kids who celebrate any of the stuff on here would know. I mean, Kwanzaa's not impacted, we're not in school. But it's, it's a time when at least we know that nothing new, no test reviews, those kinds of things.
No athletics, no, nothing. I, I think if we're gonna do that, then it shouldn't be, they don't have to worry about anything.
I think that athletics is something we'd have to dig into.
It's CAC scheduled.
Correct. If they're scheduled for us, that's something that.
That's different, yeah.
If Mr. Blumenthal is in charge of scheduling some of these games, which he is, then you can work around that. But if he's not, then.
Right, then we have, we can't change, we can't, we don't have, we can't change that. But I think taking some action and knowing that we can put something in place. And I think the observances as opposed to scheduling days off is also respectful to our working families. This goes beyond vacations. So if we start taking a whole bunch of days off, we're talking about families that need to find childcare. And that is a significant issue for a lot of our families.
So I do think that if the calendar is approved tonight and the board is okay, I, I can work with the schools and other administrators to come up with a proposal for the board regarding the special observance days, how we can move forward recognizing those within the district.
And then maybe when that committee is formed, whoever it is on there can also take into consideration the contractual pieces.
That'll be part of the proposal.
Right.
Can I, aside from the religious, cultural end, do we have, so it's conferences right now, as we all know. Are the conference days on the calendar from the beginning?
They are.
The half-days? So is there any way, I know that it shifts because of snow days and stuff like that, but if we could give parents a heads up, like these three, I don't know, for other parents in the room, but I was like, oh my God, there's three more half-days? And then we're kind of like scrambling for stuff. So I don't know if it could be like in November, you'd second or third week, heads up, there's, that's probably when.
Snow days aside or any cancellations.
Yeah, like tentative.
We set them, right, I was gonna say, choice, when do you put them? Because we.
Do they don't go in this calendar, but they go on the calendar that's posted online, the monthly calendar, at the beginning of each year?
So I think we'll just transfer them and put them on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we can.
Okay, we're, maybe make a little note, like conference days will be listed on.
We do have a spot for them here. We can just plug them right in.
Somewhere, some, somewhere.
But they are on the, on the website.
On the website.
Oh, yeah, we get emails, we get emails for, for them too. Like the principal sent out the emails and we know that they're coming. But, you know, when, when life is happening, you're like, oops.
So to go back, because we have to vote on, on the calendar, what I'm hearing is we vote on the calendar today.
As is.
As is. But we will form a committee and I'm taking, Goldie, you'd say you'd like to.
Yeah, yeah.
Aleni and Jen, I think three is good. Have, be on that committee along with Mr. Stirk, okay? Any board members welcome to go to their meeting on there. And we can talk about the cap, the future of the calendar. And meanwhile, we approve this calendar, but we will include the special observance days. We will put, put down asterisks somewhere for these days. We also have to look at these days. I remember if I'm looking at Weathersfield.
Some of them are on Sunday.
They, I mean, they could.
I see one that's missing.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some that are missing. There's, there's a lot, you know, you look at Chinese New Year, that's a week-long celebration.
And two, actually, isn't it?
Yeah, two weeks. You look at some others. So we need to take that, you know, Ash, Ash Wednesday. I don't think, I know of anyone who's taken a day off for, for Ash Wednesday on there. So they have a lot of different things on, on there. So that, this committee will have to look at that. But for this year, we will acknowledge Eid as a special observance day and Juneteenth we talked about, right?
For this year?
No, for next year.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, getting my, my, my date mixed up.
I thought we were approving it as is. And then we have the discussion.
Yeah, 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 yeah. As is.
For twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, now, so we're approving our calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three, right?
Next, next school year?
Next year.
As is.
As is. But we're putting down the.
Special observance.
The special observances. Once this committee will go back to this calendar, but once this committee looks at all these special observance days, and they may be Eid, they may be whatever, they'll be on there as special observance Orthodox, Greek Orthodox Easter. So your children are not getting tests or studying for, review for a test on the day that they would take off their holiday. Is that what I was hearing from everybody?
Yes.
But those observance days will not impact?
The observance days will not, in fact, impact our calendar for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
So that can be approved if the board chooses.
I'm with you on the observance days. I am still uncomfortable with Juneteenth potentially being the only federal holiday that we're not offering a day off for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'd like to say that, that we can approve the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar and add some verbiage that if we go past the nineteenth, that that will be a holiday. And I'm, and then the committee can do its work and I'm happy.
Is there a timeline for the committee to do its work?
I think we should by July first.
So there's no fast track to have it done before then that we can.
No, because, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just thinking if it's something that can be done faster so that.
So I think we, we determined that this year that June nineteenth was not going to be on our calendar.
For the current, for the current school year.
So now we're looking at it for next year along with some other, other calendar, calendar dates. And what Amanda is saying is she thinks that we have this calendar, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, but she'd like to see June nineteenth on there if we are in school by June nineteenth, on June nineteenth.
Well, if we revisit it, the other federal holidays that we do currently observe, our Columbus Day and Veterans Day, which may get revisited and we won't observe next year. So then Eid, I mean.
Twenty-twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right. Juneteenth wouldn't be the only federal holiday we don't observe if we adjust.
If we adjust those. But so, so for this year, for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're saying include Juneteenth because it would be the only one that is currently not there. If when the committee revisits the whole bucket for the following year, then we'll see what happens.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think that makes sense.
If we take that day, is there any contractual obligations that we have to pay for janitors and whoever else that has a day off? Right, that's what, that, and that's my reason for saying that it can't be approved today. You don't even know what the outlined factors are about taking that day off yet.
So right now, they're not included in the contracts because the contracts are older than.
So you'd have to pay them for that day. And then you'd have to pay them for the day that they come in extra.
Wait, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it just be a, a day that we're closed? That, that nobody's working?
It could be.
That's what, that's what we're talking about. And then if we just extend it to the year, year. What?
Well, what if it isn't? What if it's a, what if it's a Friday, you're taking a Friday off, right? Contractually, don't you have to accommodate the unions for that or no?
No.
So if, so Juneteenth falls on a Monday.
For every other.
So it's a federal holiday.
It's only twenty-three, twenty-four, not.
Right, and I believe in how, correct me if I'm wrong, all the federal holidays are reflective in the union contracts at this point.
Correct.
So.
Including the one that we're, Juneteenth?
No, because it was just approved.
Right, so wouldn't that affect how we have to deal with that union then or not?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench into this too because we go into negotiations with them right now because their contract ends June thirtieth of this year. And so I don't know what's coming down. Are they gonna ask for that in the new contract? I don't know that.
Well, if, whether they do or not, are we liable to pay them as it was in their contract since we changed it?
So the way it works with the custodians is I do believe we'd be liable for paying.
Right.
I do believe that because they, they get, they, they have a very specifically worded contract.
And it's not reflective in the current contract.
Right, so you're going to get, against their current contract, I'm saying for this year. And if it's being negotiated now for next year, you know, you can negotiate that in or out, however that falls. Whether they ask or not, I don't know. But for this year, you find yourself in a spot where now you're working against the original contractual agreement with the union.
But I don't think the, the honoring of Juneteenth would happen this year. I think it's proposed for next year. And by that time, we'll have the new contract in place. And hopefully that, that will take care of it.
But I thought we were saying a Monday, right?
So, yeah, next Monday, uh, next year's Monday.
So this year is Sunday? It's not this year's Monday?
No.
This year's observed, this, this year's observed on Monday, but it happens on a Sunday. Next year, it'll happen on a Monday.
Right, I, I get that. So don't you give that Monday off then?
We wouldn't because it's not in their contract this year.
Right. I, I know that, that's what I'm saying. So are you not asking for it for this year?
No.
No, next year.
I thought you were asking for it for this year and then next year.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-seven, twenty-three. And then we'll revisit that for twenty-three, twenty-four with the committee.
With the rest of them.
With all of them.
Holistic.
But this June is the contractual renegotiation with you?
Correct.
So wouldn't.
Current contract, and so it wouldn't be.
So it can be addressed now.
Correct. For next year.
For next year.
My assumption is that they will ask for, since they have all the other federal holidays off, they'll probably.
They're gonna ask for it.
I'm sure they'll ask for it, but it just, it works out conveniently that it just coincides. Because if it didn't, you might have an issue.
Correct.
Yeah, if we were mid-contract and we hit it next year, it might become an issue. So that we have to develop an MOU or something like that if we were faced with that.
Right.
So can I make a motion?
Sure. Because I'm trying to figure in my head what to, what to say.
I'd like to make a motion to make one small amendment to the calendar, adding an asterisk stating that?
Do the year calendar.
The 22, 23 calendar year, that if school goes beyond June 19th, that June 19th is recognized as Juneteenth and given a day off.
So we're going to make an amendment to the calendar, the 2022, 2023 calendar. If we go past June 19th. Past June 19th.
I just have one more question about the union contract. If we say it's off, then we have to present that to them, whether they present it to us or not, correct?
The way it worked, right, because if we say it's a day off, it's a day off. But at the end of the day, the custodians get paid for 260 days a year, whether they work them or they don't. It's just the way the contract?
No, no, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
So there's only 260 working days in a year. Between Mondays and Fridays, sometimes it's 261, sometimes it's 262. They get paid however many working days there are. So if we take that day off, we don't take that day off, they're gonna get paid for that day. That's just the way their contract works.
I get it.
So it's really irrelevant if the day's on or off because they're getting paid for it no matter what.
Right, but it's a day that they wouldn't, we would have expected to pay.
No, we pay. There's only two, so in Mondays through Fridays and a 365 a year, there's only 260 or 261 working days. They get paid for 261 working days, whether it's a holiday, whether it's, they get paid for every working day there is. That's the way their contract is currently working. It's just, it's a, it's unique, it's a unique contract for everyone else that we have to deal with. So they would get paid for it whether we take that day off or we don't take that day off. When we call it a holiday, we don't call it a holiday. They're getting paid for that day. As long as it's in a Monday to a Friday.
Of course.
It's just?
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table to accept the calendar as it is, except for an amendment, to accept the 2022, 2023 calendar as it is, except amended to read that if we go to June 19th or past June 19th, we will recognize the federal holiday of Juneteenth.
So moved? Do I move it now?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Okay, so we have one nay, and this is for June 20, 22 to June 20, 23. So Marie, how do you vote? When you have?
No, I voted aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Ready? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aleni?
I'm gonna abstain because it just kept going back and forth.
Okay. And Ron?
No.
Negative, no, right? Okay, so the motion passes with seven yeses, one abstain, and one no. Okay, thank you for that discussion, everyone, and for bringing it to our mind, to our attention. Aleni, Jen, and Goldie get together with Patrick. You can start having this meeting and be able to work on account for the observance stays for next calendar year.
Will that committee have the opportunity or the ability to solicit from the public or from the student body, any type of?
You know, I think we need to get as much input as possible. I mean, there's also, and I'm not being political here by any means, but I don't even know if Columbus Day is gonna be a holiday anymore, a federal holiday. That may be end up coming off. I have no idea. So we're taking down other things pertaining to Columbus Day.
I think it'd be great to talk to the students and see students, families, the town, and get as much information as we can.
Can we ask questions about faith? Legally is what I'm wondering. Because I think, yes, I think that's a really great idea to be able to just?
So I do not think that we can?
Yeah, I think we can.
If they volunteer.
That's what they say, they'd be volunteering.
Let us talk to, let us just clear that with our attorney, how to go about those questions. Or as a committee, put your questions together that you would like from the community, and then we can go through to our attorney to make sure that we're not violating any laws.
And if it's okay, I'd also like to include Mr. Grumenthal, Mr. Wardlow with the contracts in athletics as well.
Yes.
To get a full picture.
That's good. Okay, Assistant Superintendent report?
So graduation is officially June 17th though, right? Is that all part of this as well?
So normally the board doesn't vote on graduation. It's just a discussion and if the board is agreeable to it.
June 17th.
June 17th.
Okay, I'm gonna say it loud for all the senior parents and students. Graduation is Friday, June 17th, 2022. I feel like yay.
You ready for me to start?
I am.
Okay. I have a bit of a lengthy report this evening, so I'm gonna break it into some sections. And if there's any questions, just stop me. Our online kindergarten registration is currently open and to date, we have 155 students registered. Once families complete the registration online, they will receive information from their home school regarding screening, upcoming spring events, all of that kind of stuff. If a family needs access to a device to register, just reach out to your home school and they will set one up for you to come in and use. Next, as a part of the Connecticut State Department of Education summative testing expectations, we are now in testing season, we have just completed our annual lost links testing for all of our English learners in the district. The high school will participate in Connecticut SAT School Day for our 11th graders. And this year, they're breaking the junior class into two groups and using the entire library facility on March 23rd and 24th. And this is the first year that the SAT via College Board will be given via a digital platform. So it'll very much mirror what students are used to with S-Back testing. The high school will be communicating specific schedules to families and students of 11 graders. S-Back testing window for the state opens on March 28th and remains open through June 3rd for students in grades three through eight. Each building will set and communicate their own schedule, but we will not begin testing in district until after April break. Now that we have devices for all students, we don't have to stagger the scheduling so much. The district will also complete our state required next generation science standards testing, and that occurs in grades 11, 5, and 8. That we will do before April break. So a little bit of what Aleni said, the elementary second marking period ended on February 24th. Conferences will be held on March 16th, 17th, and 18th at the elementary schools. And those are early dismissal days for our K-5 students. The middle school is in the process of parent teacher conferences, and we had the early dismissal yesterday, so that impacted that. More to follow about a makeup date. Any questions with any of that so far? Sorry for so much information. We just finished our second round of elementary extended day program, which focused on math. 170 students in grades one through five participated across our four elementary schools. It really was amazing. Students in grade one worked on place value and number sense. Our second and third graders worked on number sense, place value, and strategies for addition and subtraction. Our fourth and fifth graders had more of a focus on multiplication and division. We are so grateful for our teachers who have really gone above and beyond in terms of signing up to stay after for these after-school programs. It's long days. But our students are so excited to be there and our teachers have been wonderful. We were beginning to plan our third and fourth sessions, but our PTA groups are also running their wonderful programs. And they have been so accommodating to Mrs. Wilcox, who is our directing our programs. So we decided just to hold for now because we don't want to take or complicate any of the programs that are happening in some of the elementary schools. So once there's a window of time that we can bring some more after-school programs, then we will do so. At the middle and high school levels, we are beginning after-school programs there as well. We were able to extend our late bus another two days of the week. So that will open up opportunities for students to stay late Monday through Thursday. And that helps us to be able to offer more after-school opportunities for students. It goes hand in hands with some of the clubs that have been proposed. But we're able to offer drop in English and math tutoring for students, English learner support. The high school is setting up assistance for the high school mastery-based diploma requirement. If you remember when we talked about our Portrait of a Graduate, our Vision of a Graduate, we talked about the journals that students will be completing. So there's gonna be some after-school help if students need someone to guide them in terms of how to go about starting that journal or just for some feedback and editing help. We are also offering an after-school credit restoration program at the high school for courses that are required for graduation. And these include some of our full-year courses and our senior English courses because you cannot graduate without your four years of English. So for students who did not finish semester one in a good standing, we have a plan in place if they stay after school to try to make up some of that credit while simultaneously finishing the other half of the year. It's really a partnership with the student and our support after school. At the middle school, we will be, we will be beginning an after-school intervention academy, which will focus on language arts and mathematics. And lastly, we are in the early phases of planning our regular education side of summer school programming again. And it is our intent to have very similar offerings to last year, which was really well received across the district. And those offerings will range from elementary to grade 12, both with an intervention and enrichment lens. So that's in the planning stages right now and more to follow about that. Thank you.
Can I just say, thank you so much for extending the late bus to those other two days. That's a huge value to parents and the summer school program as well. I've heard so many great things about that, so looking forward to that as well.
We're really trying to find different opportunities for students and families and some really creative things, STEM opportunities, humanities, and just different things for students.
And speaking of summer, I was approached by Andy Delvecchio earlier this week, and he plans to utilize, I believe, Clintonville and Monauise for the rec department summer program.
Jen?
Sure. So I wanted to give an update about this school-based health community services for the elementary level. We're still waiting to hear approval for the application, but my contact through that service is also in the process of hiring two clinicians, so it's just a matter of time. The last time I spoke to her was about a couple of weeks ago. She's thinking a start date of April or May. So hopefully when we come back in May, I'll have some good news. But she is in the process of hiring two clinicians that will split between the four elementary schools. The college transition night that I've always done for the past couple of years to, we open it up to different universities, trade schools, and state schools to get, to give information about accommodations and the disability office for students who have a 504 and IEP in high school. So it's set for April 7th. And we have nine schools so far, so we actually break it up into two sessions. The first session is like the state schools and trade schools, and then the private universities is the second session. We actually, last year, got a really good attendance of parents and students, so I'm hoping to have a good turnout. A flyer will be sent home in about two weeks, and actually a student at the high school creates the flyer for us. And then I have one other thing. So the preschool at Green Acres, the students and staff are thrilled that the playground is up and running. So the ribbon cutting ceremony is March 18th, but I also wanted to thank the town for helping us fund the preschool playground because we couldn't have done it if they didn't help us with the funding.
It looks so nice.
It does.
That looks so nice.
Yeah, beautiful.
That's all it's in.
Can FPS day competitions at the end of the month, right?
Yes.
North Haven?
Yes.
High school?
Thank you.
Because it's in?
Our high school?
Mm-hmm. It's in-person, full.
Oh, great.
Thank you. I look forward to taking my grandson when he's old enough to the playground, Green Acres.
You just have to make sure they leave the gate unlocked.
I can hop up that.
It's pretty high, I'd be impressed.
Let me know when you go.
I know. Howard, let's go to your, I know you have a lot, too, too many.
So the budget continues to remain on track with spending. It's in line with last year. But there are, there are a few items I would like to note. Object 112B, which is custodial maintenance trade salaries, you may have noticed that this went from a positive to a negative in the budget. It was due to a recent retirement. The employee who was one of three remaining hired before 1993 was paid out 50% of the accrued sick time. And so that's by contract, we have to do that. And so that was not budgeted for because we didn't anticipate the retirement. So that ended up being about $21,000 that hit that line. That was totally unanticipated. So just be aware that that's why that went negative. Object 330D, which is legal fees, the area continues to remain in over budget with four months left for the year. As Ms. Gabrielle recommended in the last meeting, that the sped reserve fund be utilized for these unbudgeted expenses, we would like to recommend that if it is the desire of the entire board, that a formal vote to approve such use of the funds be taken to formalize and codify the use of the sped reserve for legal funds going forward. We would only recommend it that for the most, it will only be for the sped legal expenses incurred for the balance of this fiscal year. That's just a recommendation. The, do you wanna do that now or do you wanna go forward?
I think it's, go through your report and then I think, you have quite a few motions.
Yeah, exactly. So that's fine. Just in the way you wanna do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess when you were talking, and you're talking fast.
Yeah, I'll talk.
But when you said the legal expenses taken from the Special Education Fund to pay special education legal fees was the clarification I was looking for.
Okay, so that's, okay. Okay, object 5600, which is sped tuition. We have applied $499,371 of the 737, 644 that we received so far, which brings this account to a zero balance. So you've seen that, that go down in the, and you'll see the budget available become, go to zero in that, in that line item. We are expecting to receive 82% of what we applied for excess funds, which is gonna be $983,525. So we've received 75% of that already. The balance will be received in May. And then one other item I just wanted to add is, and we did talk about the addition of the extra days for the extended, the late bus. However, I just want to bring up the idea that, as you're all aware, gas prices are going up. And so fuel costs are, I'm estimating right now, because I don't know what it's gonna be for, for the balance of the year, but it's gonna be probably about an extra $25,000 worth of fuel costs just because we budgeted it about $2.25, $2.35, and they're well over $3 right now. And so we spend about, we have 40, we use 40,000 gallons of diesel every year, and we use about 30-something thousand, give or take, of gasoline for the vans. So luckily, it happened a little later in the year, so we've got through the bulk of the year with utilizing the budget number. But now, as these prices are spiking up, what you're seeing is that our costs of fuel are going up. One of the good things is we are on the state, state contract. So we are getting at the lowest possible cost we could. But again, it's still, the price is just going up because of what's happening in the economy. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Howard, the vans you're referring to, are they like the facilities vans or like?
No, this is the vans that's transportation for students.
Okay.
And that, that 25K extra, that's for total transportation cost, not just?
That's just the fuel costs.
Well, I mean, but that's for all of our transportation, not just late bus specifically.
No, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say, just because I was brought up already. I'm sorry, yeah, it's $25,000 for those late buses. No, it's not just for all of our transportation. Yes, I'm sorry if I confused. So I guess?
And I know you will be, but I think we're just really gonna have to look at what we have for the 20, next year's budget, what's going to happen if these diesel, diesel, I think, was well over $6 today. And as gas prices go up, you'll see me on Russ Dalley's scooter around now.
So yeah, and again, that was my next part of the next step in this, is that we have to understand that we didn't budget for this even for next year at this point in time. I budgeted at a higher rate, assuming prices were gonna continue up, but I didn't assume they were gonna go up this much. So just be aware that that's also in the coming budget.
Okay.
Operate, is there any other questions about that piece of it? Because then I'm gonna go to operational items. I've talked about the Everside Health Clinic. We're meeting with Mr. Frida, the first selectman, in Everside on the 14th to discuss the ROI that's going with this project, as well as what are the savings guarantees that they can put into the contract. So that's, right now, having talked with Mr. Frida about this, he is hesitant to enter into this without knowing what those guarantees would be, as what I was too. So that's where we're gonna get that from them, and I'll come back to the board. I'll report right after that meeting to the board as to what comes out of that. And then you'll notice in my, including my monthly report is a copy of the food services profit and loss. This will be included in my monthly reports going forward. The report you have is through January, but I received the updated numbers for February today. And the new profit total for the year is $222,119. We are basically making 74 cents on every meal that we serve at the high school, middle school, and the elementary schools. And again, just as a reminder, this is not a typical year due to the increased reimbursements from the federal government for all, for all meals, which will cease on June 30th. And right now, I'm hearing that that's not gonna be renewed. So next year will be becoming a normal year again, which generally, my understanding, not having been in a normal year here yet, but I understand that the, the food services approximates between a 16 and 80,000 profit on any given year. So that's?
16 to what was that?
60 to 80,000.
So we profit 60 to 80,000?
On the food service. Reserve accounts, they curl in good shape with the following balances. We have $1,885,732 for medical, dental, and prescription, which is at 92% of our midpoint, based on that actuarial calculation. Workers' comp, we have $749,403. Note, this changed because I took out the IBNR. IBNR, the reason I backed it out of that is the $749,000 represents the cash balance available to us to pay for claims right now. IBNR is basically saying that this is issued but not incurred, but not reported. Items, that is basically if we were to leave the self-funding plan that we are currently in, we would be required to leave that behind. So that, since we're continuing on, I don't think that should be included in our balance. I just think $740,000 is the correct balance that we have available for any workers' comp claims. So that's why I changed the balance on that. Our sped reserve continues to remain at $377,537. We haven't spent anything there. Capital projects is at $606,694, and I project at the end of the year, it'll be after everything has been processed through there, which is the last, the last thing will be the redesign of the library. We'll be at about $390,000 balance in our capital projects fund.
Not enough to do our air conditioning?
Not enough to do our air conditioning. That's about $100,000 to $900,000 of building, so yes, not enough.
Okay. Did you wanna talk? Let me do this one first, okay. We have a motion to approve the monthly finance, financial report including the recommended transfers from January and February 2022?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No, thank you again, Howard. It's good, it's good. Actually, I do have one question. So when you say we make a profit on lunch, and a whole profit, that doesn't, does that include? We also have reduced and free lunch.
Well, this year, everything's free.
Everything is free.
For the last, because of COVID, the government has made every lunch free to every student, regardless if you qualify or you don't qualify, for free and reduced. That ends, that exemption ends this June 30th, 2020. It's scheduled to end this June 30th, 2022. There's talk, matter of fact, CASBO has us reaching out to our representatives to have them extended. It hasn't been extended at this point.
Okay. Again, I think we have to look at where things are gonna be next, next year as everything is increasing in price, as much as its profit is, is good. I think we also need to take a look at, if the free lunch is gone, we need to figure out a price that's gonna be affordable for all of our families.
for all of our families.
Well, at that point, right, so free and reduced will continue, I understand what you're saying, but free and reduced will be implemented back in again for those families that qualify for that. But again, yes, we have to look at a price point exactly for that. But one of the good things about having this, it's almost like a reserve for any of the, any of the equipment that needs repairing, so that doesn't come out of the operating budget now, right? So we're not going, so this is, becomes a reserve for any of the repaired equipment, any of the equipment.
Like when we needed a freezer or something.
We can use it, we can use these funds, and it no longer comes out of the operating budget, which is currently happening on a normal year.
And Howard, just to be clear, we cannot use those funds for any other reason?
We cannot use those funds for anything else but for cafeteria.
And that's why when we say profit, in my mind, I'm thinking profit, we don't need to, we're not making a profit.
We don't need to make money, right, but just have, because of the, just because of the reimbursement, it has to be utilized for, yes, cafeteria.
All right, thanks for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Do you want to start this, or you want me to do it?
Howard, can you address a little bit about the extension of the yearbook contract, the photographer?
Okay, so the, it's the photographer, the yearbook contract that we are talking about is for the photography one, because that expires this year. And in the contract, there is an actual where we can extend it one year if the services are approved, they'll agree to. And speaking with Dr. Dallay, he was, he said they love working with this photographer, and they wanted to, they wanted to be able to extend it one year. So he was recommending that we bring it to the board to get it extended.
Okay. Any questions? I always go out of order. May I have a motion to approve the extension year for Impressions Studio as the official school and yearbook photographer for North Haven High School?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? I also like to add the motion to the agenda of, may I have a motion to add, a motion to the agenda concerning the utilization of the special education reserve fund that Howard mentioned earlier?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion on that, understanding that that money is going to be used for special education legal fees? All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. So we added the, thank you. We added the item to the agenda. Now I need to have a motion to approve the utilization of the special education reserve fund for special education legal expenses incurred for the balance of fiscal year '22, ending June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I just tried to make it really quick in one motion. Now we'll go into public comment section of our meeting. Are there any public comment, Mr. Gabriel?
So I hate to like break up a, what's mostly like a pleasant meeting by bringing it back to the last one, but I do want to say a couple things about that. So last month's meeting of the Board of Ed was held in the high school or was it the middle school? I can't remember.
It was the middle school.
That was rough. And I just wanted to just kind of, as a member of the community, just apologize to the entire board for having to endure that. There was a lot of hyper-aggressive, very histrionic, and sometimes wildly conspiratorial allegations that were alleged against the board at that meeting. And that was completely out of line, and none of you deserved that. You all work very hard, our teachers work very hard. They bore the brunt of some of these allegations too, which are very serious things that were being said about them. I can't imagine that most of them were true, if any of them. And you all know me, and I think that we don't always agree with each other, but I think that we've always been able to talk to each other as equals. And it's clear that the group that showed up last month was very organized, and they came with an agenda. And that's, I'm saying that as, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I think that sometimes that's a good thing, when you, you know, you want to have, it's your right to speak to your community and to show up together and to make a point. But what I don't think is right is when you make such an enraged ruckus that you drown out any kind of minor murmurs that may dissent from what you came to the meeting to discuss, throw the entire meeting into disarray, and storm out angrily after being told that you've won. Basically, they came to advocate for my choice, and they got my choice. So, very confusing in that matter. So us as members of the public, we're the public, we're the people, and we do have a voice with the Board of Ed. But we're also guests in these buildings, and we're our neighbors, and we can do better than that. And this is not the first time that we've seen this behavior in this town. I've written to the board about this before, that there's kind of a toxic sense of entitlement that sort of permeates through a small, but very, very loud minority of residents, who think that they can intimidate the rest of the town into staying mum, and staying that they represent the views of the entire town, which is not true. Now, they are entitled to come to meetings, and they're entitled to speak their minds and say what they feel, even if it's untrue, even if it's way out of line, or even if it does show disrespect. That's still within their rights to do. But what I hope that you'll agree is that they do not have any right to shout over other people, treat Board of Ed meetings like their own personal rally, and refuse to follow school rules. Now, even if they, it's clear that they thought that the mask mandate was stupid, and that it was pointless, but it was still a school rule that they were not following when they went into, well, like 60 or 70 people or so. And also that they can shut down meetings too. I think that's what the board needs to be able to conduct its business. And I've also written to the board before about people feeling too intimidated to come to these meetings. I heard a lot about that after this past meeting too. People being intimidated even to, you know, in the past, to like even write emails or discuss their views with educators or with members of the board, with athletic advisors, people like that. And people that have been forced into self-censorship and forced to accept an unacceptable status quo in order to avoid the intimidation and bullying that comes with raising a contrary opinion in this town. And you guys have heard about this yourself too. You've seen it in the Grum-Rubber debate, during the mascot debate. You've seen people, children, parents, community members telling you that they felt isolated, that they felt stigmatized, they felt unnecessarily comfortable. And us personally, you know, my wife is on board. I have to say, I don't speak for my wife. I'm a separate person from her with my own opinions. Sometimes I have to clarify that because I am seen as just kind of an extension of her at some points. But our family has had to endure everything from people bending the air out of our tires, people setting up fake emails to send threats to us, and people threatening online to socially ostracize our children from birthday parties, all kinds of crap. Which, you know, really cool. I mean, that's awesome that that is how you're dealing with this. And when I try to raise these things, you know, with certain company in present, you know, I'm always kind of confronted by this sort of familiar refrain, which is, "Well, if you don't like it, move." And the message of this statement is clear. If you don't agree with us, you're not welcome here. It's not that your opinion is not welcome here, but you, as a person, need to disappear. And I know of several people who've taken this advice and have left the school district, and that breaks my heart. These are good people, more than half of them black and brown, by the way. And we've heard this before too, from alumni who don't want to move back here and buy property in town. From others who felt that they're not being heard and feel that they can't wait for the change that the law will do. And it's hard to blame them, because I too do not want to live in a town where a small gaggle of people determine what gets said, when it gets said, and who's allowed to speak freely. I'd love to think that this is not the town that I have lived in for the past decade. But this is not about me. This is not a me problem, it's not even a them problem. And, you know, frankly, it's barely the board's, it's not necessarily the board's problem either. It's all of our problem. And I know that this is the last thing that our educators need right now, after all that they've been through for these past couple of years, is to deal with the problem of adults in this town who don't know how to conduct themselves. But if we think that this isn't trickling down to our students, that's, we're sorely mistaken on that. We all need to live with one another and to solve our problems together. We don't get to just conduct psychosocial warfare every time we don't get exactly what we want right away. This is something that most of our children can grasp by the end of kindergarten. And if we truly can't do any better than this, and it's going to keep happening over and over again, and the best that we can do is to move, then that's just incredibly disappointing and sad. So at the very least, we need to start dealing with these things structurally. And I wanted to sort of put it to the board, ask if there are, are there rules in place that we can enforce to ensure a level of civility in future meetings, particularly when contentious topics arise? And they, believe me, they will. This is something that's being pushed from the highest levels. People are going to keep coming, they're going to keep raising issues, people are going to get heated. It's happened before in this town, it's going to keep happening. And I know the last thing anyone wants to do is remove people from the meetings, because that definitely sort of, I'm with you, and that teeters on a free speech issue. But if the board is unable to conduct their business, that might be a necessary step. Maybe there's other things that we can propose, you know, I'm not, I don't know. But we can find best practices, because this is happening all over the state. And last time, you weren't even able to address the crowd's questions because the chaotic vitriol caused the meeting to end prematurely. And this type of thing can't persist. The board needs to be able to conduct their business without rampant interruptions and headling. So please, if there are policies in place to help rub in hysteria, let's enforce them. And if those policies don't exist, let's create them. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Jen, Caldwell?
Jenny Caldwell, 69, Kimberly S. Caldwell. I was not planning on talking tonight.